We call the regular meeting of the Upshur County Commission to order. We'll begin with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Amen?
Amen.
I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America- And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Geez, Tommy, you were slow on the takeout there.
I was waiting for everybody to stand up. Ten nights. Okay, at this time, we will have the reading of the minutes of the October 24, 2013, Upshur County Commission Regular Meeting. Good morning, Jackie.
Good morning.
Good morning.
The county commission of Upshur County, West Virginia, held their regular meeting at the Courthouse Annex on Thursday, October 24, 2013, at 9:00 a.m. Donnie Tanny called the meeting to order. There were present Donnie Tanny Commissioner, J.C. Rafferty Commissioner, Troy Brady Commissioner, Megan Palmeroy County Administrator, Jennifer Dinklo, Assistant County Administrator, and Jacqueline Dinklocker Secretary. The meeting began with a moment of silent meditation and prayer followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. All motions passed unanimously unless otherwise stated. After reading of the minutes, on motion by Troy Brady, seconded by J.C. Rafferty, the commission approved the regular meeting minutes of October 17, 2013, as submitted. Megan Palmeroy provided a review of the Menard Consulting Incorporated Letter of Agreement for Fiscal Year 2013, G A S B forty-five, Actuarial Evaluation Services, in the amount of $1,900. After discussion, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved and authorized the president to sign the service agreement. Lee Dixon and Patricia Oliver, Upshur County Public Library Board Representatives, appeared before the commission and provided an update concerning intended usage of property adjoining the library. Mr. Dixon advised that the house that is currently located on the property would require extensive repairs to make renting it a feasible option. Mr. Dixon advised that the library board plans to use the property to create an additional parking area for the library and requested counsel from the commission concerning demolition of the housing, the beauty shop. Mr. Dixon advised that the buildings do not contain any asbestos and the operator of the beauty shop currently rents on a month-to-month basis and is aware of plans for the parking area. Helen Phillips, Upshur County Assessor, appeared before the commission, sitting as a Board of Assessment Appeals, and provided a review of the agreement between Hartwood Forest Land Fund for LP and the State Tax Commission resolving protest and application for review of natural resource property valuation matter. Ms. Phillips advised that Hartland Forest Land Fund for LP did not appeal the valuations during the Board of Review and Decisions sessions, however, did meet requirements for appeal with the State Tax Commissioner prior to the November deadline. After discussion, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission approved the agreement between Hartland Forest Fund for LP and the State Tax Commissioner, Mark K. Makovich, and the assessment appeal as recommended by Helen R. Phillips. Nate Kennedy, Boy Scout Master Troop 128, appeared before the commission and provided a review of the Scouts' upcoming food drive on November 2, 2013. Scouts from Troops PAC 128, 124, 101, 06 will be going door-to-door from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. to collect donations for food items. In addition, a drop-off point will be located at Jawbone Park from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. All donations will go to the parish house food pantry. Donnie Tanny reviewed the following four-year information items. Number one, American Legion Frank B. Bartlett Post 7 invitation to Veterans Day celebration. Number two, agendas and/or notices of meetings as listed. Number three, meeting minutes and/or financial reports as listed. Four, meetings as listed. Five, appointments needed or upcoming as listed. The commission approved all invoices for payment. The commission approved all vacation orders. The commission approved the following settlements as listed. The commission approved the following exonerations and/or refunds as listed. Terry Jo Bennett, Addressing and Mapping Coordinator, appeared before the commission and advised that she has signed a memorandum of understanding with the Randolph County E-911/ Office of Emergency Management Director, James Wise, concerning a Randolph County structure. The structure can only be accessed from Upshur County roadways and therefore requires Upshur County addressing. The MOU is an agreement that even though the structure has an Upshur County address, quote, "Randolph County E-911 Center", will be designated as the public safety answering point, unquote. With no further business, on motion by J.C. Rafferty, seconded by Troy Brady, the commission meeting adjourned at 10:30 a.m.
Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes as read? Not asked for motion to be approved as such?
Second.
On favor say aye.
No.
Both same side, motion carries. Okay, we have a couple minutes for our 9:15 appointment. So we'll go over a couple items for discussion and possible action approval. First being discussion and approval of employment for a full-time tax deputy effective date, November 18, 2013, at the rate of $9 per hour. On page three of your agenda, you'll see a letter from the sheriff stating that after proper advertising in the newspaper, accepting applications, and holding interviews for the position of tax deputy, I would like to ask the Upshur County Commission to approve the hiring of Lisa May Lipscomb to fill this position. I respectfully request a beginning employment date of Monday, November 18, 2013, a beginning rate of pay of $9 per hour with benefits. That is the request of the sheriff. Do you have any additional information to add to that, Megan?
Just that she has a lot of experience with accounts receivable, accounts payable. She has a lot of accounting experience, which is why they asked to start her at $9 because she has a lot of experience that will be applicable that they won't have to train her on.
Okay.
So, and she's of tax experience.
Right. Gentlemen, do you have any questions or comments?
No.
Not asked for motion to be approved, the hiring?
So moved.
I'll second it.
All in favor say aye. Both same side, motion carries. And the next is correspondence from Joyce Harris Thacker on James W. Curry Library Board Member Accounting Financial Information Request. Megan, you go to that board first.
I do, yes. I'm actually on that board. At the last meeting, we discussed this. And basically, they just want some more information that they haven't received about their finances, basically their budget, seeing what they have in their accounts. And I've put together all of their trust account documents that I'll be getting for them. So I'm working on that to get them all that information. It shouldn't be, it might just take a little bit of time for me to put all that together, but I should be able to get all their financial information for them. They also asked to give a pay raise to their maintenance staff.
Right.
And I discussed that with them at the meeting as well. And I indicated to them that I thought that perhaps that would be something that we would address at budget time.
Right. I think that'd be a proper time to do that. And I think basically, they just want a little more detailed information on the finances so that they can make recommendations to us on projects up there, which is, that's their purpose, they're an advisory board to advise us. But then the commission ultimately makes the final decision. So I think if you give them that information, then that'll help them to do a better job as an advisory board. Gentlemen, any comments other than that? Okay. And it is now 9:15, and we have Patty Adams, an Upshur County resident. And she's here on pancreatic cancer awareness month proclamation. Good morning, Patty and company.
Good morning. Thank you.
Step right up there and adjust your mic and...
Well, you know, I've been doing this for six years now due to the loss of my nephew, Jim Fatty. He was 38 years old, and he died of pancreatic cancer. And his sister promised him that day that she couldn't do anything to help him, but she would work hard to see if she could help someone else that may die of pancreatic cancer or suffer with pancreatic cancer. Whereas in 2013, an estimated 45,220 people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer in the United States, and 38,460 will die from the disease. Whereas pancreatic cancer is one of the deadliest cancers and the fourth-leading cause of cancer death in the United States, and is the only major cancer with a five-year relative survival rate in the single digits at just 6%. Whereas when symptoms of pancreatic cancer present themselves, it is a late stage, and 73% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first year of their diagnosis, while 94% of pancreatic cancer patients die within the first five years. Whereas approximately 1,197 cases will be diagnosed in West Virginia in 2013, including an estimated 12 cases in Upshur County. Whereas the incidence and death rate for pancreatic cancer are increasing, and pancreatic cancer is anticipated to move from the fourth to the second-leading cause of cancer death in the U.S. by 2020. Whereas the U.S. Congress passed the Recalorant Cancer Research Act last year, which calls on the National Cancer Institute to develop a scientific framework or strategic plans for pancreatic cancer and other deadly cancers, which will help provide the strategic direction and guidance needed to make true progress against these diseases. And whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network is a national organization serving the pancreatic cancer community in West Virginia and nationwide through a comprehensive approach that includes public policy, research funding, patient services, and public awarenesses and education related to developing effective treatments and a cure for pancreatic cancer. Whereas the Pancreatic Cancer Action Network and its affiliates in West Virginia support those patients currently battling pancreatic cancer, as well as to those who have lost their lives to the disease and the commitment to nothing less than a cure. Whereas, the good health and well-being of the residents of West Virginia are enhanced as a direct result of increased awareness about pancreatic cancer and research into early detection, causes, and effective treatments. Therefore, it be resolved this 31st day of October, 2013, that the Upshur County Commission designate the month of November, 2013, as Pancreatic Cancer Awareness Month in Upshur County, West Virginia.
Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation as read?
So moved.
Second it.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Both same side, motion carries. If you all like to come up here, I'm sure the press would like to get a picture. Okay, next we have ACH authorization release for EBSO due to name change from SOMI.
And this is, SOMI is our healthcare provider, and this is just, they've changed their name to EBSO, Expert Benefit Solutions. So in order to continue basically being able to work with our bank accounts, they just need a new authorization with the name EBSO on it.
Okay, the motion approved?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, both same side. You made me vote. Okay, and we have an application for the West Virginia Courthouse Facilities Improvement Grant for $20,000. So our grant folks, I'm sure, will explain that to us.
We are applying for a grant through the Courthouse Facilities Improvement Authority to do repairs and possible tearing down of the chimneys on the courthouse. They came through last year and did some recommendations. And after meeting with Greg Harris, we determined that the chimneys are the most important improvement at this point for safety factors.
Basically for the smokers in the alley.
So we're applying for the grant first.
Right. Now, this, I just saw here somewhere the CHIP-O. Does that process start after the grant is awarded? Then you start dealing with CHIP-O on the...
The historical people. The executive director told me that once we send the application, and then we start dealing with the historical society and exactly what they recommend and whether it's a historical value to do it.
Okay, any questions on that? Is that a, is there a matching grant on that? Is there a little bit we had to kick in on that?
I believe it's 25%.
Okay, that's still a lot cheaper than doing it all ourselves. So we have a motion to approve the application. I'll authorize the president to sign the documentation.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor say aye.
No.
Both same side. That $20,000 grant, they get excited about that. Understandable. Okay, we have review and division of Justice Community Services grant to forward for $20,000, July 1, 13th to June 30, 14th.
And this is just to have it officially in the minutes. This is a grant that we applied for a while ago, and they have sent in the formal paperwork awarding.
Okay, very good. And we also have a press release from the County Commission Association of West Virginia Executive Director Vivian Parsons concerning the County Commission Board of Directors Legislative Stance on Salary Increase. And it basically says that the County Commission Association, because of the economic conditions of the state, is opposed to an effort for pay raise increases for elected officials this year. A lot of counties are laying people off because of coal severance reductions. And with the economy in West Virginia, such as it is, there's a lot of counties that aren't even allowed to get pay raises to their employees so they don't feel that they should be in a position of supporting pay raises for county elected officials. And so as a result of that, the County Commission Association will not support a salary increase for 2014. And what they did in order to get a consensus, because actually, the Board of Directors of the County Commission Association has the authority to take a position on a legislative issue like this. And what the board did was surveyed all the county commissions that are members of the association in West Virginia, and 70% of them voted no as far as support for a pay raise for elected officials. And the reason that the county commission has taken this position, all the other elected officials are in support of the pay raise is the county commission are the ones that have to figure out where the money comes from. And I believe the way we figured that, about $100,000 is what it would cost the county for the proposed raises if this was passed. Now, the other elected official groups are supporting this with legislative efforts this year. But the effort's been in place for the last two years, and the legislature's not been too interested in looking at this. A lot of the reason being because of the, even though it's county money that pays for these, with the state economy in the shape it's in. And this year's actually worse than it's been the last two years as far as reduction in revenues. And I believe last I saw, that the revenue reduction is even more than what they anticipated.
I think they're talking about 80 million.
Eighty million and less.
Eighty million dollars, yeah.
So it's, and you know, when the state has less money to work than the counties. Now, there's a few counties that are in good shape financially. And actually, when we were in a meeting, one of our meetings, Glenn Gaynor, the state auditor's advice to counties that had extra money this year, put it in your rainy day fund, because it's going to get worse in the next couple, three years till oil and gas comes back. But you know, even though oil and gas production is on the increase, and the prices start to ease back up, the amount of revenue to the state and counties that's generated by oil and gas is a very small percentage of the amount that's generated by coal. So it takes an awful lot of oil and gas production and growth to make up for the reduction in coal severance tax and the jobs and the effect that has on the economy. So you just, with gas and oil and coal and timber, they're all cyclical. Right now, everything's down. Go ahead.
I have a quick question for you, Donnie. In that case, I know we've been talking a lot about Quarter H. And now that they've pushed up the date on draft, we'll bring you that. Have we got any studies done yet on how that might affect Upshur County as far as positive?
If quarter, when Quarter H is finished?
As long as they have the coal and oil and gas now, maybe perhaps we'll be able to look at the investment factor and the different things that become along with Quarter H as a way to make up for that. Have we got any studies besides the...
Well, Jacey's on that.
We've had a study that, of course, has been recently published accounts. There was an executive summary indicating that, I think it was an impact if we delayed Quarter H until 2032, '33, rather than 2020, it would be a loss to the state, not just Upshur County, but to the state of over $1 billion, 1.25 billion, I believe, was what an independent professional economic policy group put together. There's no question that, in my mind, and I think the mind of many people, that Quarter H's completion in a sufficient time, we're only, I think by next spring, we will only be 25 miles shy of completing the entire corridor. Now, recognizing also that that may very well be the roughest part of the highway because of the terrain, it still is something that we should focus on and should obtain funding for. They've broken it down into three parts, my understanding is, and trying to get funding through a combination of grants or funding from the federal government as well as possibly state funding. But as Donnie's indicated, there are issues with monies today. You read it every day with regards to the gas tax, maintaining our highways independent of Quarter H with the current income from the gasoline tax. Of course, people blame it because cars are more fuel-efficient, and you have fewer vehicles needing gasoline because of that, so that the monies that are normally obtained through the gasoline tax are reduced. To me, anytime you pass legislation, no matter how well-intended, and gas tax is an example of that, it is always the unintended consequences that somehow we fail to recognize. Everybody wants to have more efficient vehicles. Everybody wants to have more, you know, cleaner environment. And that's, I don't think anybody argues against that. But obviously, when you are successful in that particular area, which we have been to some degree, that minimizes the income from the gasoline tax. And there are other things that are being proposed to include putting black boxes in vehicles, certain states, I believe Oregon, in particular, is looking at that as a means of charging people by their mile versus the gas tax they consume. But getting back to Quarter H, yes, I think there can be every argument that's been made by the Upshur County Development Authority. Steve Foster, of course, is in charge of the Quarter H program, has proven that we need the road as soon as possible in order to maintain, in order to benefit strategically from the expansion of terrorism, from the expansion of industry. I go without saying.
Well, for two reasons. First of all, I'm just wondering if the county, now that we're looking at revenue decreasing from coal and gas and state revenue from grants, if Upshur County is now starting to target on how they're going to benefit and perhaps make up that difference with the regulations, commercial through zoning or whatever. Which brings me to the second point there. There are some other governmental bodies that are really concerned with the way that the county perhaps does it zoning and is maybe perhaps not prepared to be dealing with this. And I would disagree with that. I would think through Steve Foster and Development Authority, of course, we are one step ahead. And with him being in, right there in the action, that Upshur County is perhaps already being progressive as far as zoning and looking ahead for the next three to four years upon completion, how we can utilize that benefit to Upshur County.
Well, one of the factors that involves, for example, Quarter H beneficial, we have entered into negotiations or discussions with Randolph County and with also presumably, haven't got a date set to me, with Lewis County officials. But we recognize that in promoting terrorism and promoting some of the benefits that will, you know, benefit Upshur County, some of those projects which will benefit Upshur County, that by taking a regional approach. And we've had a very successful meeting with Randolph County. For an example, they have certain attractions in Randolph County that will attract tourists, such as the American Mountain Theater, the railroads. We have benefits here in our county involving like the Game Farm or Wildlife Center, as it's now called, among other arts and crafts, antiquing. Those things can all be combined, and if we sell it as a package to tourists. So those are some areas where we can work together to enhance that particular type of activity. Certainly, when you have transportation success, you also have industry and business success. Because when you have individuals who are considering relocating or establishing a business in Upshur County, they are going to be looking at the transportation facilities, whether it be railroad or highways. And as has been pronounced by the Development Authority on a number of occasions, there is an inland port at Front Royal, Virginia, which will be explicitly available to Quarter H. We would then be able to have our goods transported to Front Royal, then transported to Norfolk, which is the deepest inland port, I believe, or port, coastal port on the east coast. And that would open us up to a vast market. Because again, at the same time, they're enhancing the widening of the Panama Canal as we speak. And once that's completed, then you'll have larger draft ships that are able to maneuver through the Panama Canal carrying larger cargoes. There's all sorts of things that are bountiful on the future of West Virginia, especially in the energy field. But again, it's going to take intelligent recognition of how we can best develop those resources, again preserving the environment. And it will create certainly large opportunities for people, bringing in jobs for our people. So there are a lot of areas that have to be studied, but we are focused on that, we are involved in that. And I think in the long run, if we approach this intelligently and work together cooperatively with our neighboring counties, in particular Lewis and Randolph, we'll be successful in the end. Thank you.
Did you have something you was wanting to say? J.C., first of all, cover today. You know, along those lines, I just, our latest edition of the State Journal, there's an article on the front page about Farm Fresh and the efforts of our new commission of agriculture, Walt Helmick. And it's interesting, it states that West Virginia's consumed $7.1 billion worth of food in West Virginia and produced 1 billion. There's $6 billion worth of food in West Virginia that's being consumed, that's being bought from out of state. And the article goes on to tell about, you know, years ago at Huttonsville, and even years and years ago, when the state mental hospital was in Lewis County, they produced their own food, those institutions. And in Huttonsville, they grew potatoes and beef. And I don't know what the reason was, it all fell by the wayside. But in the article, it talked about that West Virginia buys 100,000 pounds of pork to feed the inmates in our jail facilities, and it all comes from out of state. So along the lines of Quarter H and the completion, there's a lot of opportunities in West Virginia that we can supply our own needs instead of buying them out of state. And I think, from what I see, I think Walt's doing a good job. The article says Ag Commissioner Walt Helmick is going whole hog to develop economic opportunities for West Indian field of agriculture. So I think there's a lot of local effort, you know, from the farm to the plate. A lot of our local restaurants like to buy as much as they can locally. So I think that coupled with the effort of the State Department of Agriculture and helping develop markets and work out some of the roadblocks, I think, you know, if there's a $6 billion market there for food to be produced. And now, the effort the last couple of years is to introduce locally grown food into the school system. And so I think there's another opportunity. So there's lots of opportunities out there. And you know, you hate to see the impact- And, you know, you hate to see the impact of coal, but what happens is, West Virginians are pretty resilient. You know, there's, sometimes when one area of the economy suffers, then that provides opportunities for other areas. So we just need to be looking at all those opportunities to try to make West Virginia a better place to stay, to live and to stay and to keep our kids here, so.
Well, along those lines, I think it's a good idea that the community, now that we have a debate in mind and they have sped it up, so that our communities, particularly our farmers, our commercial growers, some of our people that own land along, perhaps quarter H route, come together as a community, turn it, okay, how can we benefit and what can we do as a community, all come together to help make that more successful than just rely on our governmental bodies to make that happen, perhaps the Development Authority. They are governmental bodies, sort of state, but I think the community could actually do a lot to help bring forward more ways that we can benefit from that quarter H, particularly the transportation, coming back and forth back to your point with Front Royal. That's saving a lot of time for them, and gas and money as far as the transportation companies are concerned.
Okay, all right. And now we have correspondence from Joe DeLonge, executive director of the West Virginia Regional Jail Authority regarding per diem rate FY 2014. And the good news is they're not raising the per diem. And he's certainly done a good job in kind of streamlining the operation of the regional jail. The concern and part of the reason that, actually what they were talking about was granting a reduction to the counties, but the state's talking about transferring 600 to 1,000 division of corrections inmates out of the regional jail. And that's helping to keep the regional jail per diem down, but if they transfer 600, I think, I think he said 400 to 600 they can handle, that would balance out and wouldn't raise the per diem.
Yeah, there was some amount where it wouldn't matter that much, but the number of inmates that they're looking at transferring would be, I think it was about double what would be okay, that they could absorb.
If they, if they transfer 1,000 out, then what that's going to do is, that's going to take that income revenue away from the regional jail authority. And they'll go out of state, there again, they'll go out of state and be housed in out of state facilities, and that'll increase the cost of the operation of the regional jail, which again will drive up per diem rate for the counties, because it'll cost more to house those. But it's remained unchanged, it will stay at $48.25 per day per inmate, which is, there was a slight reduction last year in that. And like I say, Joe DeLonge has certainly made a lot of strides in providing more efficiency in the operation of the regional jail and helping to keep the costs down for the county, so.
I think there's also an article in today's newspaper, the Gazette, indicating that the state was in the process of constructing a regional correctional center down, I believe in Canuck County, that will be completed hopefully in 2015. So that would hold around 500, I believe, Department of Corrections inmates, which would relieve a little bit of the stress. Plus, addressing what you're saying there regarding out of state inmates, that might be under construction for consideration, returning those inmates back into West Virginia in the future. But they are anticipating, I think it's 2015 when it would be totally completed. So it's a little ways off yet.
Okay, we have correspondence from James F. McColl, deputy president of Roan County Economic Development Authority, reactivation of US 33 as the Blue Gray Trail. And what they're asking is the counties that US 33 goes through, it's been designated as the Blue Gray Trail, and they're asking the counties to pay basically for signs that say the same, the Blue Gray Trail, and to put them at each end of your county along Route 33, so.
And they have, they actually provide a contact number in there for each county where we can contact, I think with the Department of Highways, yes.
Okay, well, we'll have Megan and Jennifer to make a contact on that and see exactly what the situation is.
I don't think they've indicated, not indicated the cost of the signage, I don't think in this letter.
I did not see that in this.
I'm sure the Department of Highways will have that figured, because they've done it in some counties, so they'll know what the cost would be.
Would that be old Route 33?
Well, I think, I think it would be because that's actually the road, the physical road that was the Blue Gray Trail, not the quarter H, which is the new, so it would actually be, and I think there's probably more than one instance, maybe, maybe not, maybe Upshur County or this area's the only instance where they actually changed the route number 33 to the quarter four lane, and then the old Route 33 is 151 now, so. But I would think it would be the physical route, which is now 151. But we can find all, Megan can find all that information out, she can let us know then what the situation is.
Route 33's going to end up with a different designation, stopping point than what it did. It went into Winchester, or not Winchester, but O'Persenburg, Virginia. Now it's going into Front Royal, possibly be going into Front Royal.
Right.
Ends up at Richmond, and it's just in and out, you know.
Right.
The new part of it over in that area, in eastern part of the state, couldn't be named Blue Gray Trail, could it?
Well, the old route could be, I mean, the original, and I think that's what they're going to be doing. I think, I think it is the original route, that'd be my guess. If they're doing it for historic purposes, it would have to be the original physical route.
Which was the old Parkersburg.
Sawton Turnpike.
Well, and in the letter, they indicate that they want to reactivate it as it appeared on the state highway maps in 1940.
Right, so that would be.
Which stretches from Far Harbor, Michigan down to Richmond. So I'd assume it would be whatever was there originally designated.
Right. Well, Megan will get all those questions answered for us, too. And we have the NACO prescription drug discount program update.
That's just a monthly update that we get as to who is taking advantage of that prescription drug card program. And I'm still working on getting a list of where we can have those available to everybody, but it dropped a little bit this month.
And at our meeting, they said that if we give them those lists, then they would actually send them.
Oh, okay.
I believe they said they would actually send the information to those pharmacies and places, well, not just that, but any place where it can be distributed. But, so, yeah, it's a good program. I mean, it saves, what was the average savings was?
I know, and West.
Thirty percent of savings, it's almost 31%. We've been averaging around 30, one month it was 42, 18, but it's been averaging 37% savings. So that's an opportunity for people that don't have insurance to use the free NACO prescription drug discount card and save average 30% of your prescription, so.
And even if you have insurance, but your insurance doesn't cover a particular drug, you can use that card.
Right, right. So that's a good program. We'll try to get more information out, so. Well, Upshur County Sheriff's financial statement, July and August, any comment on that, Megan?
No, it was just a little bit late getting it in there, which is why it's a few months behind, but just a normal update.
Okay. And our agendas, notes of meetings, minutes of meetings. And, do you have anything else, Megan?
Um, no. It's Halloween, so I just wish everybody happy Halloween and be safe driving and have fun tonight.
Hey, you guys, be safe trick-or-treating tonight, okay?
Trick-or-treating for the county is six o'clock to 7:30, I believe.
You just never know.
And I didn't have anything further, but I know that Michael did want to address you, is that right?
Good morning, Commissioner.
Good morning, Michael.
I'm sure you all probably read yesterday in the local paper my concerns about the tax money that was spent for the lights downtown. And it's not an agenda item, I'd just like to come before you and ask a couple of questions that was posed to me. As you know, I volunteer for various things in the community, and I'm not a member, nor as anyone else, a member of Create McCann, because it's not really an official organization and heavy bylaws or anything of that nature. But it was mentioned in the paper that I was a member of Create McCann, and Jerry and I and several other people volunteered for Create McCann, and Create McCann does a lot of great things for its community. But my concern is the amount of money that the city handed over in some form or fashion to Create McCann to do that project. And I got involved last year about six or eight weeks before Christmas, whenever the system had failed to the point that they couldn't get the original person to work on it, and I volunteered my time to get out and working for Christmas and for Strawberry Festival. And the last we had left it was that they were getting estimates to see how much it would cost for someone to come in and take over the actual repair work and maintenance of that. And I don't believe we actually got any real numbers. The project seems to be managed by the Development Authority. And so I'm wondering if you can clear up a couple of questions. One, do you know if any county money went towards that project?
Yes, and that would be no, because they asked us, and I don't remember, I don't think Buddy was on at that time.
No, he was not.
He was there, but we decided that.
No, it was Creed, that was on, Creed was on there.
Right. You guys change fast, I can't keep up with you, I'm sorry. But our discussion was that we would just wait and see what happened, because, you know, usually, things like that need a couple of years to see how they're going to work out. And so at that time, we, I forget what the request to us was, was $3,000?
It was five.
Was it 5,000? I knew it was, yeah, it was half of what the city kicked in. It's a shame to make that, and I don't know how much investment was made from the private sector, I don't know what the total cost was. Does anybody have that figure?
Quite, quite a bit, it was discussed at various meetings, but I haven't been able to get a real hard number.
Right.
And so, you know, my concern is, is that since the Development Authority seems to be managing several projects that include several thousands of dollars through the Upshur County Development Authority for Create McCann, you know, do you know what percentage of time that's being spent and paid for by the county for that?
Well, actually, it's, the county makes a contribution to the Upshur County Development Authority, just like we make a contribution to the airport authority. They're a standalone organization that was able to, you know, buy and sell and make contracts and sue and be sued and all that. They're a standalone organization that, the only involvement we have in those organizations is appoint people to them, make a contribution to them. But as far as, as far as knowing how much time that was spent on that project, I don't, we.
Day-to-day operations, we have no.
No, we have no.
No oversight.
I think it, from the article I saw on the paper, it looked like there might have been, and I may have misread this, but it looked like there might have been some second thought on the city that maybe they should have, they should have handled the maintenance of it and that aspect, which I think, I think they did put it up, didn't they? Did the city, the street department put the lights up?
No, actually Jerry helped put it up.
No, I mean, he'll put the lights up.
Oh, yeah, I was trying to give him credit, so. Okay, Helen Campbell and some people, they got some volunteers from one of the local rescue houses and.
But didn't they have to use a bucket truck or something to get them up?
I'm sure they did, yeah, they got a lift and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So, and I'm concerned about how much money was actually spent for materials versus what I understood was to be volunteer labor. And is there any audit trail at the County Development Authority that, how that money was.
They're audited, which I think they're being audited as we speak, or at least last week they were being, an audit was being conducted of their overall operations, and whether that involves Create McCann or efforts that are associated with other organizations. Again, we have no, the county commission has no oversight responsibility or, they're an independent stand-up agency, standalone agency.
So that would be, I should address that question to Steve Foster?
That would be the more proper person, or the board of directors. I'd like to expand on Donnie's comments relative to, at the time that we were solicited for a contribution, the decision was not strictly the county commissions alone, we canvassed the other elected officials in the courthouse as well, at that time, as to their thoughts on pursuing that request, not for the funding, but for the idea of putting up the lighting on the courthouse and the annex. And it was, I think, almost a universal feedback we received was that the officials and the employees that talked about it were reluctant because they preferred a traditional old-time type Christmas with the wreath on the door and candles in the windows.
And the candles in the windows, and it always looks nice. The courthouse stands on its own.
There was a.
The lights were nice for Main Street, but the courthouse really stands out.
Right. And we were not certain, no one was certain whether the lighting would be appropriate for the courthouse because of its architectural configuration and whatnot. So many, there was a lot of thought that went into our decision, because you know, normally you want to support things that the community can bring the community together and do those things, but this was something that the officials in the courthouse, as well as a number of the employees that voiced their opinion, were reluctant to participate in.
And I have to commend the commissioners, you know, you all do a great job in researching issues and spending the county tax money wisely, and thank you very much for that. And in closing, I have to say that on a recent trip, I drove through Mount Storm, and I'm glad to see that section well underway between Mount Storm and Davis. Of course, that's the flat top of the mountain, like you say, the roughest part is love to go, but at least that's downhill.
Well, I will tell you, you know, I occasionally drive over to Dees Arlington, which my son and his wife reside in.
That's where I was at.
And of course, that connects straight with 66, the exit. And by, even with the construction as it is, that portion that's been, you know, completed, that reduces driving time, because we used to go up to 68 in the cross and then down to 70 and 70, and that's taken at least a half hour off the driving time.
Yeah, and it's a beautiful.
And it's such a scenic, I mean, it is a beautiful, beautiful area of the state to show to tourism, to people that would use that highway in the future. The benefits, and tourism alone, the benefits are extraordinary. But when industry and business development occur, which they will, will occur, that can really open up the entire north central part of the state to an excellent position for development and showcasing our natural beauty.
Yes, great things to come.
I'm not a native West Virginian, but I will tell you, I've lived here for 30 years, and.
We adopted it a long time ago.
It's just a great, it's a great place to live, the people, yeah, the whole package.
It is, all right. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike. Okay, you gentlemen, have any questions?
Nothing additional.
Anybody else happy? Okay, well, we'll get started with our paperwork.